Good evening again to everyone. I'm so happy to see you all because we wanted this forum to be a start. We wanted it to be here and we wanted to bring our sponsor in, Oxnada Foundation. May I have your attention, please? This will be a school teacher. Okay, thank you all for that. Okay, so welcome today to the forum for the mayor or candidate as well as District 7 candidates. I would like to just welcome everybody. You want information and information is what we want to give you. We want to make sure that when you leave here, you have something to say, "Oh, I didn't know that. I found that out." So this is what this is all about and this is about neighboring all over the city. So thank you so much, first of all, for coming. And I would like to always start off with a prayer. So I'm going to ask Ms. Shorter, who is one of our neighbors in Oxnada Valley, to start us off with a prayer. And then once she finishes, I'm going to turn on the running. Let us all compose ourselves now. Turn off cell phone, laptop, writing. Let's give the Lord the glory for one. We are here, Almighty God, asking you to gather us, to lead us in the right path. The greatest command in our power is to love the Lord thy God with the heart. The second is to love your people as you love yourself. We are all neighbors here. Why do we love each other? Because God first blessed us. Bring us together in harmony, what we need, what we want, to live as neighbors. Learn to be a good neighbor. Learn to be a Christian neighbor. Lord have grace on us. Gather our hearts and mind that we would think right. Make us bold against the enemy. Lord redeem you. The election of the neighbors, the people that were being elected is for the neighbors. Gather our hearts. Oh, give thanks unto the Lord for he is good. Amen.
Amen.
Hey, good evening. Oh, y'all can do better than that. All right, you're late, okay. First and foremost, can we give all of the candidates a round of applause? We're coming out here. We know how busy your schedules are. We know that you've been invited to a thousand forums. And the fact that you take time out of your schedule to come and speak with the folks in Oxnada Valley and others who have joined us today, we thank you. We're starting with the District 7 Council race forum first. And so I'm going to go over the format as laid out by the Oxnada Valley Neighborhood Association. There will be an opening statement for 30 seconds. Then each candidate will come to the podium to answer this question. Why are you seeking this position? And include the goals that you hope to accomplish in the next four years. At the podium, these candidates will get three minutes, three minutes to respond to this question. Then they will go back to their seats to answer questions that are on these index cards from folks who have written down questions here today, combination of questions from the residents, and Alabama media professionals. From their seats, those questions from the index cards, candidates will have two minutes to respond. And finally, candidates will have a closing statement while seated for 30 seconds. We have this beautiful Barbara and Beverly seated up front right here. These are our timekeepers, okay? So Barbara has a timer. Miss, is it Beverly? Miss Beverly has red, green, and yellow. Green means go, start talking, start answering the question. Yellow means your time, wrap it up. So you have about 30 seconds left and red is stop. Are we good? Awesome, awesome. So we're going to get started now with opening statement. And we'll start with Alexandra.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm Wardine Alexander. I grew up right here in District 7. I attended Weenona High School. I graduated from University of Alabama at Birmingham. I spent my career, my work career as a clinical laboratory technologist, working in training, education, clinical labs, and managing training programs, and overseeing quality control for a global pharmaceutical manufacturer. I moved back to the district in 2012 and have been serving ever since. First on the school board, I was appointed and then elected to serve on the school board, where I served as the school board president. In 2018, I was appointed to Birmingham City Council seat representing District 7, and won special election in 2019, and now 2021. Thank you. I look forward to sharing questions and answering for you. Thank you.
Mr. Malone.
Hello, everyone. My name is Mike Malone. I am in I-12, near by today in my job area, working with the U.S. Customs Security for Buffalo Corp. I am married to a beautiful man, Malone, with four beautiful children, Bridgette, Lake, White, and Bear. Thank you, Bear, for the character. I have grown up around District 7. I actually was over here before any of these things was over. So I am here, I'm going to be in District 7, and I look forward to it.
Thank you very much, our candidates. We're going to start with our first question. You'll have three minutes to respond, and please come to the podium. I'll repeat the question. Why are you seeking the position? And please include your goals that you hope to accomplish over the next four years. We'll start with Mr. Malone.
I don't have $3 million of our money. I don't have $100,000 of discretionary funds. What I do have is a vision, a worth-able, and the ability to do things done. On that vision, I was inspired by people like Kayla, who's getting ready to put, who's getting ready to build homes over there, which would be perfect for Riley, because Riley has had a home built since 1998. They have 40 blocks of it. We have a three-part golf course city, Ilyby over by West, Alton-Jelfson could be grateful where a Walmart neighborhood store. That way, we know we'll have quality food, we'll have quality service, and professional people that run those stores. Also, you can also put retail there, and you can put homes there. So we're building up that business. Roosevelt City has an A.T. gas station school that was there. That could be a state of law business incubator that a board could be going to help us. I'm running because there's so much opportunity in District 7. Right around the corner, we had, I think, 34 acres that we could put of middle school. We have an elementary right here, why not a middle school? Why not a state of yard park or a rep that's active where we can go and play? And not just have the booths open every three years, every four years when selection's here. Let our neighbors play because when we don't have anything, you're taking the people, the art, the people who have the most testosterone and estrogen right there, and making them stay in the homes, they're not being able to get out. We have to do more and produce more in our communities. And I'm willing to do that, especially if you vote for me on August 26th. Thank you.
I currently serve as the President of the City Council and Misha Council for District 7. Why do I want to run for reelection again? Primarily, it's for continuity of progress. There's progress going on and ongoing right now in District 7. I've started initiatives and worked and advocated for you to bring those initiatives and beginning to make a difference. There is 1 million upgrades that's going on in three of our area parks, Witten, Oxnard, and Jamaica Park. Those are our dollars that we'll put to use and bring those parks up to code where they would be livable green spaces for our residents. I also gave $10,000 to the Freshwater Land Trust to enhance what's going on already at Red Mountain Park, one of our premier green spaces in District 7. I've also given money for STEM programs at the West End Field Community Development as well as the Pouting Library to increase STEM programs and give our children options where they can come to our school and learn and play. We talked about what's going on in our neighborhoods. We're continuing to work with residents to bring about community development and community revitalization. When I first came into office, we were working and we had to have multiple daily cleanups in our neighborhood. I've worked with residents to give them the tools and give them the power to be their own boss in their neighborhoods and to work together as neighbors to revitalize those neighborhoods. I do improve our leadership. You can look at my track record and see what has been done in the district to advocate for you, to educate you, and work with you. I want to build on that momentum and continue that delivery of results. When I first got into office, I lobbied and advocated to get paid one of the worst roadways in the district. That was 10 blocks of Jefferson Avenue. I'm continuing to do that. When I first came to office, you were only paying seven statements of roads. We've gone from 13, this year we'll have 33. Five of those statements are right here in Oxnard. I've also worked on capital projects. We have six ongoing capital projects in District 7. Two of those are currently planned for Oxnard. We have the Weenona-Oxnard drinking project as well as work that's going on in the Oxnard Park. This is going on throughout District 7. I have unfinished business that I would like to complete. There are challenges that still need to be addressed. D-7 does not look the way that I want it to. But I'm looking for resources, partnerships that will make our district a great place to live, work, and play. I also want to continue to elevate and coordinate community trust. I do therefore have a chat to with our neighborhood leadership, also have coffee with the clergy with our churches. We have a church to surround every corner in District 7. Let's bring those churches in, make them a part of our neighborhoods, and they can work with us to make District 7 a great place for you. Thank you.
Thank you to both our candidates for your opening statement and for answering this question. This question is a question that came from the Oxnada Valley residents, so thank you so much for answering that question. Now, this next series of questions is coming from our index cards. If you have not received an index card and you're in the audience who would like to write down a question, we have Oxnada Valley neighborhood residents available to give you an index card. Several of these questions will come from Oxnada Valley residents as well as members of Alabama media professionals. For these questions, our candidates will be seated, and they will have two minutes to respond. Once again, green is when you start answering, yellow, you have about 30 seconds left, and then red is a hard stop.
It's Rob.
Yes, ma'am.
I can't see the call.
You can't see the call, okay.
She's banned, she just says just whatever, but just so I'll be aware of the time.
Okay, that says only fair.
Can I move the coat in back? Can I be helpful?
Awesome. All right. Our first question, we will start with Alexander. The first question is, what will be your first priority if elected? Two minutes.
Well, as I said already, we have started and continue to change in District 7. It's been said, let's ignite the change. The torch is already burning. We are already making changes in the district. My first thing I would do is to talk about more with our neighborhoods to increase community engagement. Our neighborhood associations are the backbone of my ability to work with you and to advocate for you, learning your issues, knowing your desires. So I want you to improve community engagement by working with neighborhood presidents and giving out more information so that our residents will come and work with us as part of the neighborhood association program.
Thank you. Mr. Malone, same question, two minutes.
First thing I would do, I would speak with whoever the current mayor is, because there's been one mayor recently that has given a vision for District 7. Then I would go with the neighborhood, as I'm doing now, speaking from Braceville Heights with three neighbors, Roosevelt City, who we know loud and clear, Oxnada Valley, Garden Island, and Oxnada. People are telling us what they want. I'm not going to let them do it. They're telling me that they want basic city services. You have homes from over here, quarter dollars or half a million dollars, and we can't give them, you know, basic services. We have a neighbor just around the corner who's saying that he can't get his trash picked up on time. We have citizens here that are working. We have three neighborhood presidents who help. They are actually working with us. They're telling us, we just want basic city service. And then we give them the vision, and we ask that mayor, what are you going to do? And not even, as we bring our problems to them, we expect issues. You're going to know, I'm going to tell you, every month, you're going to know what's going on here. It's coming in to me. I'm detailed. I'm not just going to give you some flyer. You're going to have everything, the base that they were told, what they told to your sponsors from next administration. So that's it.
Thank you. We'll start with Alexandra next. This next question says, well, it's not really a question. It says, please explain the Mayor Council Act and how it limits the council's ability to make decisions.
All right, the Mayor Council Act. It was actually an act in 1955, and it set up the mayor council form of government. In 2016, there was a drastic change to that act that created, in my opinion, a strong mayor form of government, and it weakened the council. We're not able, the mayor directs over 25 departments in this city Birmingham. As a city councillor, I cannot direct any of that staff. We have to send that information, escalate that to the mayor's attention. Also, we're only able to vote on the budget. We're not able to add or adjust line items to the budget. So let me ask you, if you were responsible for meeting the needs of 20,000 residents, we need one more power than that. Again, as a councillor, our primary role is to legislate, advocate, and educate. But we still have to work within the confines of this mayor act. I would like to see that same question asked of the candidates and the current mayor as to how they would like to see that form of government changed. I don't think so, because they have more power than your council, and they're nine of them only need to get that power back. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Malone. Same question, two minutes.
Mayor Council Act is centered. It goes, you, the citizens, mayor of the city council. That's the basis of it. Now, can you count to five? No, you can't change it, buddy. True. No, you can't really do it. You can't talk to the party. But if you've got five individuals, which most of them, they do, they passed a stadium, they passed an amphitheater, they passed a whole bunch of stuff, and none of the city councils did not have a lawyer. Wouldn't it make sense to go into a $9 million deal with a lawyer? You wouldn't buy a woman without a lawyer, right? So if it entered into you, you count to five, and you did that five, or you're nine. The only thing that this term councillor has went against was to sell market books. It was the only time that you've done that the dime went against the bill out of this last four years. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This next question, we'll start with Mr. Malone. I'm keeping time up here too. Okay. All right. What will you do to support small businesses in the city?
First, streamline. If you ever tried to start a business in Birmingham, you know that it's a difficult task. I tried to do a realtor, and that exactly, a realtor, simple, right? It was a realtor dream, and I thought, here I am. I'm not trying to be funny. Stringline the process. You know that if it goes to the city and county, put it on the website, put the documents on there so we can download, right, what you need to do. Then tell us what to do. It's not hard. You can do a LLC before you can get a business license in Birmingham, Alabama. Now you think about that. That's my opinion.
Thank you. There was a second to reset here. Same question, Alexandra.
Thank you. I do want to rebut some of what's been said already, because some of that information is not correct. But I will answer the question. Do you have any questions for me, Dan?
Yes. What will you do to support small businesses in the city?
I've already used our dollars, which we created in my grant that went towards helping small businesses already here in District 7. One of the recipients of that grant was Blue Optical. Another recipient is a lady that has a cleaning service. So by working with small businesses, mainly entrepreneurs, it gives them opportunity to expand and increase the progress that they have. That's a commitment of mine that I will continue to do, even when the our funding runs out. Other things that I do is support those initiatives that we have ongoing right now in the city Birmingham, where we're working with entrepreneurs and small businesses, things like the Bold Grant. Those applications are done primarily for small businesses, and I'll continue to work for them.
Thank you. We'll start with Alexandra, her next question. Reset. What program or plan do you have to curb 18-wheelers from destroying our roads since signage doesn't stop them from driving through our neighborhoods? Let me repeat it. What program or plan do you have to curb 18-wheelers, big trucks, from destroying our roads since signage doesn't stop them from destroying, driving through our neighborhoods? How about that in the first two minutes?
Well, I've already been working with Birmingham Department of Transportation, where we're looking at grants that will approve the roadways in District 7. We must enforce our laws, and we have laws on the books, but it's a matter of enforcement, being sure that we're there when the speeding occurs. We also have opportunities within the neighborhood, there are common settings and different forms that the neighborhood can utilize to put in the money that we can help to calm these traffic areas. Not only 18-wheelers are a problem for us, but there's also a significant amount of speed. And so that is, work with the West Precinct and the South Precinct to increase the number of officers that we have riding in our neighborhoods so they can observe that. We also have to equip our police cars with license plate readers and other readers where they'll be able to print that information directly to the real-time crime center, and they'll be able to then catch this offender as it is occurring. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Malone. Same question, may I repeat it?
Make sure we get through here to involve, for example, right up on the hill, right around the corner, there was trucks coming from the golf course. We had Walmart trucks coming up on this very road right here. Imagine a big 18-wheeler coming on a two-lane road in Oklahoma City. You have a road that's going right around the corner, Icah City, one of the most dangerous roads in Birmingham. They want to even put up guardrails going over there toward Lawson. You have these 18-wheeler coming over here. You have one going to ride that mile, go over there, might be on the projects, Kemble Home, Thompson. And you have the trucks and everything going, but you have to have specific routes, first of all. Just tell them that you can't go down, and if they do, they'll be fined. That's our system. It's the simple things that we need to do. But as a people, we got to get out there as well as the community. I've contacted the neighborhood president one time when I was riding. I have 18-year-old that's learning how to drive, and you imagine depression. That's what you got to reference. Keep it simple.
Thank you. We'll start with Mr. Malone. This next question, would you assure District 7 will be inclusive of all neighborhoods? And if so, how?
First, as the city council, I've seen District 3. She took a percentage of her $100,000 that she divided between the neighborhood presidents. They first had $10,000, now they got $2,000. But if I give them some of that money or that $100,000, they'll be close back to $10,000, where they can actually do something. That's including the district. I would also, I told you, I would have talent, four years minimum, to where the first two would get your issues, the third would be the resource, and that fourth would be what else can we do? I believe in you. I believe in you. Ladies, you know, my number is 205-218-9728. Now you have my numbers if you need them anytime, especially on a day like August 26th.
Thank you. Reset. Alexandra, same question.
Well, first of all, I did tell you earlier that one of my goals is enhancing community engagement. And Mr. Malone is absolutely right. Knowledge is power. So the more information that you have as a resident, the more powerful your role is as a good neighbor and helping to improve life as exists in District 7. I provide each area, 17 neighborhoods, quarterly newsletters that go out to inform you of what we're doing in the district and how that relates to what we're doing at City Hall. I also have what we call a chat to with neighborhood presidents. We're not just eating during chat to. We're learning, we're learning more about the city, giving other opportunities for improvement in our neighborhoods. When we talk about Roosevelt City, let's talk about community engagement. That neighborhood was just about dead. There was a lack of participation in community engagement. What we've done, instead of giving the money to each of the neighborhood associations, we decided to group three neighborhoods together in a community for back-to-fund or back-to-school resource. We had over 400 people that came out, not just for Community Monday. This was a resource day, where we pulled our resources together and worked together as a team. So we'll get those type of things to encourage the way that our neighborhoods operate, and again, how we respond as neighbors to each other. Thank you.
All right, we're going to reset. We'll start with Alexandra, last question. Can you name five things you have done to bring a positive impact to the community and/or cities? Can you name five things you have done to bring a positive impact to the community and/or city?
Thank you. As I said earlier, we have six ongoing capital projects in District 7. One of those addresses, guardrails, in the Weenona, the Weenona East Street Road. So we're beginning to make those changes to improve the safety through capital projects. The two projects alone here in Oxnada are over 613,000. I also supported 31 D-7-owned homeowners going through the Critical Repair Program. As we said earlier, we're not building in our legacy neighborhoods, one of which one of which I live in. Most of the growth and new homes are coming over in Ox Valley. What I'm doing with my offer dollars, I put over five hundred thousand into a critical repair program of our own that will empower these residents to make those critical repairs in their neighborhoods. Also, I've lobbied and used my power as a member of the city council to approve a fifteen million dollar budget towards improving our streets. Again, we had twelve seconds of roads last year. This year, we have twenty-three seconds of road. When I first came to office, we only had seven. As far as public safety, I've worked to work with the mayor and work with the council, where we spent, we approved over fifteen million dollars last year for public safety. This improved the number of boots on the ground that we have with the police department as well as helping with the fire department and approving there. There's also additional funding that I would like to support for the homeless situation that we have in our purpose, in our city. My offer dollars, three million dollars, was put into our neighborhoods. It includes park improvement, pre-take STEM programs, as well as the critical repair, and also looking at public safety of intervention programs that we're also putting into the district as well as helping small businesses through the penny foundation and giving them the support for days.
Thank you. Mr. Malone, same question. We want to reset here for this to say. Okay.
Well, I have a program that's following, keep following, at this position. Winona flag, we didn't have any uniforms. I raised the first fifteen hundred dollars to help them pick uniforms. I helped distribute seventy million dollars through COVID specials and food boxes, throughout COVID specials throughout District Seven. I help people get free classes, free eyeglasses. I help senior citizens to get free grants, those that are disabled. I help people save their homes, literally out of my pocket. My wife, she would love to back that, if I can keep my money in my pocket, but they would help out us, I'm saying. I've helped several candidates run. I've helped judges during war, become the first black female pro big judge in District Two, Pro Bay Two. I help people get their businesses started. I've helped children. I talked to him over in Aaron's Middle School for a year in Nashville, Virginia, where we got seven teenagers that were falling between cracks, and we told them that we didn't want any money. Keep going, man.
Yeah, about forty seconds.
All right, I will give you a shirt off my back. Just suddenly, a young lady actually passed out right into my arms and out of church room. I stayed there, I helped her get back up on her feet. That may not seem like nothing, but that young lady, she was gone, her daughter was still. We made sure that her daughter was taken care of. It's several things that you can do. It's several things that I, our community cleanup. That's a duty thing, that's the mayor's job, but we do it, right? I got a vision for this, I got a vision for you throughout this city. Oh, I was called a clown because I helped a ninety-five-year-old woman in college school get snakes and rats out of her house. And if you've seen, if you've seen.
Thank you so much. All right, we are now at the end of the forum for District Seven, but we would love for you both to give your closing statements before we end. Thank you. We are fortunately, I wish we could ask everyone's question in the room, though we will not be able to ask all questions. But thank you so much for writing your questions down. Okay, candidates, you'll have one minute. One minute for your closing statement, and we will start with Mrs. Alexander first.
Well, thank you very much. I am very passionate about what I want to see happen and the progress we need to make in District Seven. As I said earlier, we don't have to ignite the change. The flame has started. It is my goal as your city councillor to continue the work where we already have progress in. I would devote my platform to three Cs. Community revitalization, community cleanliness, and community health wellness. If you look at the choir, the information that you received in your homes this weekend, it outlines the work that has begun and the work that continues in District Seven. I'm seeking your support. I have the proven leadership. I've been there for you. When you come to me, I've made changes, I've worked with the mayor, and escalated that information to the mayor so that he can help me with your issues, and I would like to continue to do that. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Mr. Malone, your closing statement?
Can you open up the front door of your home? You drive into the district for the city. What has changed in the last four years? If you say nothing, change is here. Yeah, it's part of my house, I mean, kind of. Or at least it's lit, but it's not going much in District Seven. If you want change, money long with me. Ninety-nine neighborhoods, twenty-three communities, sixteen of those make up District Seven. I'm asking you to let me be the one who legislate for you, one who passes a balanced budget for you, and one that will do more in four years than this candidate has done in the last six. I'm moneylongeloneatnight.com. You can find me on social media at @aloneatnight. Thank you.
Can we give both of our candidates a round of applause? Thank you very much. This concludes our District Seven Council Candidates Forum. We're going to take a five-minute break, and then we're going to see our mayoral candidates. Thank you so much.